Okay.
Okay, all right. Good morning, everyone. A board of commissioners meeting October 7th, I'd like to call to order if anyone would, everyone would please stand for the pledge. The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Look for approval for a motion for the reading approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Make a motion.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only, anything, Ms. Hart?
No emails for the agenda.
Okay. Proclamation presentation. Two zero zero two zero six.
Am I reading that?
You. Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Whereas Lackawanna County in recognition of the critical work being done by the domestic violence advocates and allies in service of the survivors and victims they serve, we encourage all citizens to actively engage in supporting the Women's Resource Center and other organizations working toward an eradication of domestic violence. Whereas domestic violence among teens and adults are not confined to any group of people, but cut across all economic, racial, gender, and societal barriers. And the impact of domestic violence directly affects individuals and communities when society ignores or tolerates violence in relationships. Whereas women and men need to work together to bring safety and equality. And more than 1,400 adults and children in Lackawanna County were provided crisis and advocacy services last year. And 124 adults and 98 children were provided 2,042 nights of emergency safe housing in Lackawanna County last year. Whereas the impact of domestic violence is felt not only by individuals and families, but communities and a nation as a whole. And Lackawanna County joins others across the state of Pennsylvania and nationwide in supporting domestic violence victims and survivors, the advocates and organizations who serve them, and holding offenders accountable throughout Lackawanna County. Now therefore, we, Jerry Nateriani, Chris Schirmack, and I, commissioners of the Lackawanna County, commissioners of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Lackawanna County.
Great job. And they have, the Women's Resource Center has done a great job in Lackawanna County. It's a wonderful thing and I want to thank them for all their hard work. Okay, move on to ordinance two zero zero two zero one.
Yes, Commissioners, this is the second reading of the ordinance two six seven, the general obligation note, series C of 2020. An ordinance to the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, setting forth its intent to issue its general obligation note, series C of 2020, in a principal amount not to exceed $3,707,000. Whereas the county has heretofore issued its $5,492,941 original principal amount, general obligation note, series B of 2014. And whereas it is necessary that the indebtedness of the county be increased for the purposes of providing funds for a project consisting of, one, currently refunding the outstanding 2014 B note, and two, paying the costs and expenses of the issuance of the note. And whereas the county desires to authorize the current refunding of the outstanding 2014 B note for the purpose of reducing the total debt service over the life of the 2014 B note. And whereas the finance, to finance, whereas to finance the cost of the project, People's Security Bank and Trust Company has determined to make a loan to the county in a principal amount not to exceed $3,707,000, and has issued its proposal to the county for the financing of the cost of the project. And as such, proposal may be amended and supplemented from time to time, the proposal. And now therefore be enacted and ordained by the board that the principal amount of the note of the county proposed to be issued not, will not exceed $3,707,000. The county hereby approves the project to be undertaken consisting of providing funds for, one, currently refunding the outstanding 2014 B note, and two, paying the costs and expenses of the issuance of the note. Said indebtedness shall be evidenced by one, general obligation note in the principal amount not to exceed $3,707,000. The note, the note is hereby declared to be a general obligation of the county. The county hereby covenants that it shall include the amount of the debt service on the note for each fiscal year in which sums are payable in its budget for that year. It shall appropriate such amounts from its general revenues for the payment of such debt service, and shall duly and punctually pay or cause to be paid for its general revenues, the principal of the note, and the interest thereon of, at the dates and places in the manner stated in the note according to the true intent and meaning thereof. And for such proper budgeting appropriation and payment, the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the county are hereby irrevocably pledged. The purchaser is hereby designated, is hereby designated as the paying agent and sinking fund depository for the note. All expenses incurred in connection with the issuance of the note shall be paid on the proceeds derived from the issuance of the note, and the chairman or vice chairman of the board is authorized to approve requests for payment of such expenses and to pay such expenses. The county hereby appoints and engages Stevens and Lee, P.C., to act as bond counsel to the county in connection with the issuance of the note and to facilitate the intent of this ordinance. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized to execute and deliver such other documents, certificates, agreements, and other instruments, and to take such other action as may be necessary or proper to effect the completion of the financing or the intent and purchase and purposes of this ordinance. Duly ordained and enacted the 7th day of October 2020, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Mr. Durkin, this does lower our debt service, is that correct?
That is correct. The net savings that we're going to realize over 10 years is approximately $177,000.
Anyone have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve this ordinance, second reading.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Resolutions two zero zero two one zero.
Moving current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund number is three zero nine five six one dash three zero, three one zero seven eight one inclusive, totaling $14,249,964.92. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $15,294,992.68, adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on October 7th, 2020, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions about the current payables? No? Okay, well, then I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And the question, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Dominic, aye?
Aye.
Oh.
Aye, sorry. Aye, aye.
Resolution two zero zero two zero.
Entering into a cooperation agreement with NEPA Alliance, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby enter into a cooperation agreement with the Northeastern Pennsylvania Alliance, 1151 Oak Street, Piston, PA, for the funding of the Get Connected program. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following COVID-19 County Relief Block Grant to Northeastern Pennsylvania Alliance for the funding of the Get Connected program in the amount of $100,000. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on October 7th, 2020. Here, Mr. Chairman, is Director Brenda Sacco.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, Brenda.
This resolution states that the county is awarding 100,000 of our COVID-19 County Relief Block Grant funds and entering into the cooperation agreement with Northeastern Pennsylvania Alliance to administer the Get Connected program. This program will provide technical assistance to Lackawanna County businesses to support e-commerce platforms and online sales. For qualified applicants, they will receive assistance in developing online sales platforms that will assist in mitigating COVID-19 by lowering the amount of face-to-face contact and encouraging social distancing, while still being able to continue their business operations with customers during the pandemic. Any questions?
No.
Any questions for Brenda, though? Okay, on that note, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Resolution two zero zero two zero three.
Entering into an agricultural conservation easement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement acting through its County Agricultural Land Preservation Board for the sale and purchase of agricultural conservation easements for an 146.53 acre agricultural conservation easement on the Everett Farm in Greenfield Township, and a 78.85 acre agricultural conservation easement on the Echo Farm in Ransom Township. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on October 7th, 2020. Commissioner is here to speak on that is our Conservation Director, District Agricultural Land Preservation Program Administrator, Mr. Eric Johnson.
Morning, Eric.
Morning, how's everybody doing today?
Good, Eric.
Good. Like was mentioned, we are here presenting two easements for your review and approval, the Echo Farm and the Everett Farm. Starting with the Echo Farm, that's a property in Ransom Township, 78.85 acres. This is going to be purchased jointly between the County of Lackawanna and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Total easement purchase price is 197, 125, plus any incidental costs associated with the purchase of that easement. The county's investment in that is $98,562.50. That is all existing county program funds that have been obligated in past years to our program. Are there any questions on the Echo Farm?
No. Nope, not for me.
And the Everett Farm, Kathy Everett, is in Greenfield Township. The easement is 146.53 acres. This one is being purchased with only state funding. Total purchase price is $366,325, plus the incidental costs associated with the easement. This is using both existing funds that are in our state account balance and anticipated funds that we will be receiving at the beginning of 2021, which is when this easement will close. If there's any questions on the Kathy Everett Farm, I can take them now.
Well, if you're expecting funds and they don't arrive, what occurs with this at that point?
It would just be a waiting game. They wouldn't be disqualified, but we obviously couldn't move forward with the easement until those funds were in our account.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
No.
No, I've reviewed, I've reviewed both agreements. The agreements are fine.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this. Resolution.
Motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Eric.
Thank you very much. Have a nice day, everybody.
Eric, take care.
Okay, resolution two zero zero two zero four.
Moving a juvenile probation grant, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Juvenile Court Judges Commission Grant, fiscal year 2020 to 2021, for the Department of Juvenile Probation, in the amount of $88,202.18. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on October 7th, 2020. Commissioner is here to speak on that is the Chief of Juvenile Probation, Ms. Cindy Cummings.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Cindy.
Effective July 2013, the Lackawanna County Juvenile Probation Department has participated in the Juvenile Court Judges Commission Service Grant. This grant assists our department with the implementation and development of the Juvenile Justice System Enhancement Strategy. The JJSES is a statewide approach to develop a unified level of services for youthful offenders and build stronger relationships with families, schools, and community-based service providers. This approach helps reduce recidivism and uses evidence-based practices when treating juveniles while protecting the community. These strategies have been utilized for the past several years, and we will continue to improve the delivery of services at no additional expense to our department or to the county. This partial grant is in the amount of $88,202.18. On May 29th, 2020, Governor Wolf signed the General Appropriation Bill into law, passing a five-month interim budget for the fiscal year 2021. This is extending from December 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Following the passing of the second budget, a second payment will be provided to counties based on the amount allocated to the Juvenile Court Judges Commission. The JCJC is hopeful the final allocation to our county will bring our total to the funding that we received last year in the amount of $247,306. We can expect to receive a second set of the required documents for the Juvenile Probation Service Grant reflective of the final allocated budget once it is passed.
Anyone have any questions for Cindy?
No, no, not for me.
Okay, all right. On that note, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. You too. Hi, Cindy.
Hey, Cindy.
Resolution two zero zero two zero five.
Approving Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Provider and Professional Services Agreement for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021, as attached here, too. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on October 7th, 2020. Here to speak on that is the Office of Youth and Family Services Deputy Director, Carrie Browning.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Carrie.
SCRAMN Nexus is a computer application that was initially designed for adult probation, but it's been modified for child welfare. It will be used by caseworkers in the field to discuss their service plan goals with clients in real time, assess their progress, and obtain immediate feedback from service providers when they attend appointments. This will save an abundance amount of time and effort on everyone's part, and will also be able to analyze the data we receive to improve the quality and type of services our families need. And it has been approved by the state in our needs-based budget.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone have any questions for Carrie?
Nope.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Resolution two zero zero two zero nine.
Awarding the Arts and Cultural Creative Community COVID-19 Grants, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award the 2020 Lackawanna County Arts and Cultural Creative Community COVID-19 Grants in the amount of $134,500, as attached here, too. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on October 7th, 2020. Commissioner is here to speak on this is the Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Mari McWhiggin.
Well, thank you, Brian. So, as everybody knows, the whole world was rocked by COVID, and our department was no different. But we know how much our community is hurting, especially in the arts and culture field, just like everybody else. But there's a lot of gig workers, our nonprofits, especially performing lost all-ticket sales, and they're really important to the actual economic health of the area and community development. So, since a lot of our grants got, I mean, our programs got canceled, we felt this funding would be important to put into the community to help people, but also provide some respite and positive things. So, we developed a new grant program. We had over 70 applications and $735,000 in requests, which show you what's going on in our community. But we did have a panel review process that was very rigorous, and we determined that these grants taking place in 2020, we would fund now. We hopefully, we're planning on having a phase two in the new budget, and then we will definitely be opening up another round of grants for new applicants to apply for programs as we see how COVID rolls out. We'll probably release that in the spring. So, again, I want to issue that there's a process in determining these, and we're excited to see them happen. There's a lot of good ones.
This COVID has certainly been an adventure for a lot of people and everyone, but in the arts program, it's considerably more difficult, I'm sure. Anyone have any questions for Maureen?
No, thank you.
Entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Maureen. Next one is still you.
Yeah.
Resolution two zero zero two one one.
Approving a subscription for arts and culture, culture. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Survey Monkey Incorporated Enterprise Subscription for the Department of Arts and Culture to commence October 9th, 2020, and expire October 8th, 2022, and to cost $16,080. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on October 7th, 2020. Once again, Commissioners, Director McWhiggin.
Sorry, I didn't mean to, I believe we're getting a discount, which is why we want to get it in so quick for $8,000. But this is tied to the first part that I just said. We have, we have a lot of grant programs. We run and call for artists, and we have had a very archaic system that actually costs the county more in terms of staffing, in terms of the things that sometimes when we overload the system. It also is cumbersome for our applicants and our reviewers because of the process. So, what we have now in the modern world, programs that are just set for grants, they have everything, they have everything in there. They make it easier for data and reporting to the community. So, we feel this is a good investment going forward, especially with COVID. We can keep everything online, just make it a lot more streamlined and easier for everybody.
I don't, I don't think everyone realizes in the community what a driving force arts and culture are. That creates so much opportunity for us to promote economic development. And I want to thank Maureen for all of her good work over the years, and it's actually been very helpful.
And I just want to give a shout out to the commissioners for supporting us during the difficult time. It does really work.
Anyone have any questions for Maureen?
Nope.
Commissioner Dominic, any questions?
No.
Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Thanks, Maureen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Resolution two zero zero two zero seven.
Attention to the Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individual to Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee, Joseph Salvo, 107 Commons Drive, Elephant, three-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2022. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee, Ms. Elizabeth Ambone, 817 Matthew Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Egan, who resigned, and to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2021. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on October 7th, 2020.
And both of these appointments were recommended by the, that particular board?
Yes, sir, and their director, Mr. Keith Williams.
Keith Williams, okay. Anyone have any questions on that?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
And make the motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Resolution two zero zero two zero eight.
Doing appointments to the Pennsylvania Northeast Regional Rail Authority, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Pennsylvania Northeast Regional Rail Authority, Dominic Keating, 115 Harper Street, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, 18512. It's a five-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2024. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on October 7th, 2020.
And similar question, that was someone that was recommended by the rail authority, by the.
That is correct. He's a former board member also.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion approving this.
Motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board, Ms. Hart, any?
Yes, we have one email from Ms. Marie Schumacher. She says, "I recall funds were budgeted to repair the wall on Lackawanna Avenue between the Radisson Hotel and Cedar Avenue. When will this happen? I also recall a promised recycling of electronic equipment. When will this be scheduled?"
Yes, Commissioners, let me just speak on that. First, the Radisson Wall was a multimodal grant, and we did not budget county dollars for any repairs as there was no match for that, as far as the money goes. We applied on behalf of the city of Scranton tomorrow, and they were awarded the $351,000. I cannot answer, nor can anyone in our, in our county building here, when they, if they received the money yet, number one, and if they did, when they would start the commencement of repairing that wall. That would be a question that would be better served to the city of Scranton and/or Scranton tomorrow.
But this is something we can check into and see where.
Yeah, we can. We can. And that's what I mean, we will look into this. I don't know if they've been awarded the money yet. And if they were, then we'll ask them when they're going to start the, if they've started with the bids for the contractors.
We'll make it a point to check into that, okay?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll get back to Ms. Schumacher.
Okay, as far as the electronic recycling, we couldn't recall a point where we spoke about that, me and the commissioners in a meeting here in recent times. So, I don't know if, if Ms. Schumacher is referring to the current administration or the past administration. We could not recall at the time when we were talking about this. And if we did, forgive me, I can't remember it. But we did look into it, and right now there are no grants available to, to us, either through the state or the federal governments that would call for and pay for the e-recycling.
I think we need to reach out to our state representatives and our state senator and see if there's anything the state can conceivably be doing with this at this point.
We can do that, and we will do that. I just want you to know that Ms. Shapiro did look into state and federal grants for this, and there wasn't any available at this period of time. But we will definitely reach out to our state reps and our state senator and see what they have.
All right, thank you. Okay. Commissioners, other business, Mr. Schirmack.
Two things. I just want to recognize two people. Barbara Jevon, only 33 years in our Office of Environmental Sustainability. I mean, she did a phenomenal job, dedicated her whole career here with the county, did an outstanding job. So, thank you very much for your 33 years of service, and we wish you all the best in the future. And also Dave Nacera from the Emergency Services, 30 years, you know, thank you to him for all his years of service, and wish him all the best in the future.
Good, thank you. Mr. Dominic?
Um, yeah, very briefly. So, everyone knows that my motivation or driving force run for commissioner was the death of someone very close to me who died of an opioid overdose. And someone who I had met through him died on Saturday of an opioid overdose. And he was 36 years old, has a nine-year-old daughter. He was a very sweet and funny person. He was very kind. His name was Mark Scalamante. The reason why I wanted to bring it up is because, as I said before, addiction doesn't discriminate. It affects men, women, old, young, all different races, ethnicities, socioeconomic statuses. You can come from a. You can come from a, an addict can come from a, you know, a perfect family, if there is such a thing, or an addict can come from a broken family, however you want to define that. It, it, I know that we are struggling with the pandemic currently, but we cannot take our eyes off the ball of the fact that we still have an opioid epidemic and that people are dying every day because of it. And he's not the first person I've known over the past few months who have died of an opioid overdose, but I knew him well. So, I just want to let anyone know who's listening, if you are struggling with any type of addiction issue or you know someone who is, then reach out to my office at 570... That's 570-963-6800, extension 1810, and my assistant, Brian Dowden, and I will do our best to get you the resources that you need to get yourself in a better place. I'm just looking to end the stigma and let's save a life. Thank you.